Good afternoon and welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today we have a special meeting. Excuse me, it's Monday, April the third and it is one P M. All members of the court are present and the meeting is called order. Everyone will please rise for the invitation. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for this group of men and women who work together to conduct the business of Hardin County in the best interest of all of its citizens and its people. Dear Lord, please be with us today as we make decisions on behalf of the county. Please bless our troops who are working for us overseas to keep us free. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Item number three, Ms. Sims' purchasing agent, permission to solicit bids for emergency disaster debris removal services and vegetative debris site.
Someone say.
Have a motion back to Commissioner Pelt and a second back to Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, continued discussion regarding bids received for the courthouse annex building project and possible action to amend the project budget if necessary. We met in a special meeting last Monday morning and I presented the members of the court with some information that we'd received from the architect and the construction manager. Both of those companies representatives are here today. Want to thank you Cody and Ms. Daniels for being here on behalf of Daniel Construction. We also have Mr. Greg Wall present today for La Beach and you have Ouija.
Would you like to work in Andre Monsell?
Good afternoon and thank y'all for being here as well and y'all are here with, on behalf of La Beach. So, I presented the court with some options that we had been given from the architect and the construction manager. Just to recap, when the bids came in late February, I believe it was, two of the projects or the part that was bid out for the building, which I believe was the H V A C and the electrical mechanical, came in much higher than anticipated. And the reason for that has to do with this, I'm referring to it as fresh air pressurization, am I referring to that correctly? And one question I thought about over the time that I'd like to ask and I'll direct this to Greg and Ouija is in our preliminary drawings, that system was not in there, is that correct? And I believe that's what you informed us at the last meeting. But when the final drawings were finalized, I guess that was sometime in late August, if I remember right?
I don't recall the date.
But sometime after we received our stickers of obligation, which was in July, if I'm not mistaken, then y'all went forward and finalized those drawings. And I'm just wondering, when was it determined that that had been left out or that it was needed? How did that process happen?
The April, the April air units, something that we, we don't like to provide a building with unconditioned or outside air. Leads to moisture problems and water quality problems. The April air units, which I think were in the original budget estimate before design, pre-design, is something that we use a lot in projects. However, they only bring in a minimal amount of outside air. Once you get into the, you know, code requirements and how much you're actually gonna need in the building, they don't, they're not sufficient. You would need like twenty of these things to be able to bring in the code requirement amount of outside air. So in the original budget, there was something budgeted. However, it turned out not to be sufficient enough to, to meet the code.
Was the code the same then as it is now?
It's the same code and I don't know, I don't know if I was not a part of the original where the April airs came out. It's just, it's not sufficient for, for the project.
So my question is, when was it determined that that was not gonna take care of, I guess, our needs and then when did, when, when did that change before, I guess, the final drawings were, the drawings were finalized? When, what, what was the process that took place that changed it from what she just described as an April air unit to what is in the final drawings?
I'm gonna guess, essentially Cody, let me, when I go off base, y'all put together a project in a basis using contractor, designer basis. We were not involved in that part of the design. When we got involved in designing, Greg gave us the job, it's a project, go forward with it. Then we took off and asked for any input of did any of the contractors have any particular pieces of equipment that they were looking at? And Cody was gonna rebid the project anyway to the, the major subs. So we made a design like we would normally do with a, a building, a facility. Not, and from our standpoint, we really didn't know April air was in, involved in that to begin with. It was only, I guess, after the bids came in and the cost difference were realized and started evaluating what was the basis of the proposal versus what was the basis of the bid. Is that pretty close to that?
We had a meeting and I believe Gene Ammons was at the meeting, that was last summer.
That was.
It was Mr. Ammons and we had our electrician and.
I was, I was there with the electrician and, and, and I think we just made, because Gene wasn't, Gene was never involved on this project.
Okay, but what we meant at, at your office here back in June, July, last year, we just talked about something with the programming stuff.
That may have been Irving Ritter, who's also, Irving was with, Idris with Ritter, so, so it's, it's still the same company.
But it, but it was more of a conversation of what they were provided, gonna provide and I think what y'all were required, there's no real spec outline or anything.
I think to, to try to answer the question, when it was made, when we started to get those actual engineering and construction documents and all the specifications and details, we realized then that we're gonna leave this, this system as.
And can you tell me how to refer to that correctly? What is the system?
It's a dedicated outside air unit. So it's an air handler, just like you would have air conditioning in this building, but it is designed to accommodate, you know, ninety-five degree outside air, not, you know, mixed air in the building, seventy-five degree air. It's got more coil, more capacity. So it takes in that outside air, dehumidifies it, cools it down and then reheat it to a neutral air temperature. So you're, you're putting neutral air back into the building, preconditioned, so it's not affecting your, your regular air conditioners that serve your spaces. It's, it's made to precondition that outside air, so your air handlers aren't working overtime to try to do the same thing. It also keeps the building positive. So you want that outside air coming in, you know, all the time, so that air is pushing outward towards your envelope, towards the exterior and not being sucked in. If your, if your building is under a negative pressure and you don't have enough outside air, it will draw air in from straight from outside through the doors, windows, cracks, ceiling tiles, if you have a lay-in ceiling, and cause humidity problems. This keeps the air at a constant positive pressure pushing outward.
Just so I can understand the players.
It takes the load off of your air handles as well. They're not, they're not trying to keep up with that ninety-five degree air. So it's, it's kinda taking, instead of putting it individually at each air handler, it's just in one package.
Just so I can understand the players, are y'all with La Beach or are y'all a sub to La Beach?
We're a sub to La Beach.
Okay.
So it maintains positive building pressure.
Have, Cody, have you, whenever you got your initials, initial bids from the company you got them for to give us a price? With this particular type of building that we're building, have you ever erected a building like that where you were the construction manager that they did not use that system they're talking about?
Well, um, yeah, yes, sir, we have.
And have you ever constructed one that you have used that?
Yes, we have, we have done buildings. I don't know if we've done any fresh air. This is the first spray foam building we've ever done. I've never done one with foam. It's kind of a new.
When you.
Once you seal the building up like that, is that, is that one of the things that drives the outside air or is that?
No, the code, the international mechanical code has a chart basically that derives depending on what kind of space you have. You have so many CFM, so much air per square foot and so much air per person in the building. And it depends, and the numbers change very, you know, is it an office, is it a conference room, is it, you know, an assembly space with a lot of people in it? I mean, it's, you know, broken down by different types of occupancies. But that drives the amount of outside air. Every building requires outside air.
I, I understand, I understand what you're saying, I understand what Ouija's saying. I understand the design aspect, you have to go by code, I understand all that. I hope that y'all understand and I mentioned this last time in our meeting, of course she wasn't here, but we have to answer to the taxpayers and when we're given a certain amount of money that we went out for bonds for and now we're over, when, when you got their design drawings, did anything ever click with you that we might be able to bid with what you saw?
We did. And whenever we first got those drawings, you know, for bid, the Kyle Air Conditioning did on our budget, he's like, hey, this is, this is, uh, right, Kyle Air Conditioning, he said, my budget's not gonna cover this.
And he also bid.
And he also bid.
About when was that?
That was mostly around the end of January. Is that when we had the design package? It was.
Sorry, Commissioner, I interrupted you.
That's where I was going with it.
That's when we first, you know, got the feedback from our subs that we may have some problems.
If, if we have to go back and, and it depends, I'm just speaking for myself, it depends on the vote of this court, but if we have to go back and take money out of somewhere and we, we have to explain that to the taxpayers, you know, why, so that's why. And I appreciate your response Greg on the emails and answered all the questions I had in reference to that. I think the judge put a copy on everybody's. Uh, but I just want y'all to understand the reason why we're asking all these questions and, you know. I don't have anything else, Judge.
Is it Texas law that we follow the international building code or whatever it's referred to? Is that state mandated? Is that federal mandated?
It's, every state adopts a code. Louisiana is international code, Texas is the international. Most states, I don't know if there are any that aren't using the international code.
Maybe that's maybe.
At this point, yeah, most states use the international code. But ev- yeah, every building, every building requires fresh air. You might find a building that doesn't have it. But code requires, and it has for a long time, requires fresh air. How you treat that fresh air, you know, depends upon the type of building and how much you, you require, but every building requires fresh air.
And one thing that I think we touched on at last week's meeting was this building's design, I think I may have explained in some of the emails and since the Commissioner Cooper, this building is designed to be efficient and have a long life and where's the your energy costs will be controlled. That's one of the things, one of the reasons we're spraying foam on a lot of buildings now, that will reduce the need for the load. Correct. And so this building, and it should design and install correctly, you won't have the humidity and mold problems that you've had in the past. And this building should get you good energy, there's no way that one quantitates, but you should get improved, uh, energy ratings on this building, on this building.
So is the spray foam driving the type of unit that we have to have? In other words, if there was a different type of insulation, would the unit be different?
No.
It just wouldn't work as efficient. Spray foam makes it more, more efficient.
Spray foam was brought up prior to us even knowing about this, whenever Greg and I and the judge personally. That's what Mr. La Beach and Greg had suggested from the beginning, with their experience on, on efficiency like.
From other clients that we've used it for, like Post Oak Bank, their, their energy bills on their new building is much lower than what similar buildings that we got accused of.
Less insulation and a lower R value would cause the size of the unit to go up. You know, your building would require more air, but as far as the type of system, you would still end up on the same lines. The fresh air doesn't change, you know, the load maybe would vary a little bit, but not considerably. As the sealed envelope is better, you know, like I said, you try to seal it up, keep things moving outward and not inward. Your mold and humidity problems, that a lot of times that comes from being under a negative pressure where you're drawing in that unconditioned outside air that you're not pre-treating before, you know, before it comes into this occupied space.
So you'd be advising the court that there's no other alternative?
Correct. This is the, the best thing to handle the amount of outside air that your building requires.
Another question, kind of piggybacking on that, another question was the zoning is brought up that other buildings have been done, larger buildings have been done for less money. And I don't wanna talk, I think it was the church that you were talking about, but a church has a different type of need, type of load. They may have Sunday services and maybe Monday Wesley service, but for an office building, a lot of different zones, a lot of different departments, health department, DPS, all these departments. It needs to be zoned and also along the exterior walls who jump in and run things over, under. So they have a lot of different zones, so everyone can control the air temperature in their zone. If not, if you don't have enough zones, then you have what we call thermostat wars and someone is gonna be having, someone may be unhappy to go to.
I can say this for the record and to the other members of the court, it's definitely not a consensus of our voters, but I, but I have touched base with a lot of gentlemen that I'm associated with in Sillsby and run this down to them. And their questions were along the same line as ours, you know, why we didn't know the amount whenever we went out for bids as opposed to now and the amount that we are over, but the consensus from, from them is if we're designing a building, we should design it for future and up to code and not reduce anything that's in the plans, so. I, I just have a, a major problem with the amount of money that we were over and I'm not throwing blame on anyone because we have to explain that to the voters because it's taxpayers' money, so.
And it's still, I'll just say this, still very hard for me to understand the amount that we're over just on this, because of this one change that came up. When you explain what's going on, it just seems so simple. And for it to be such a high amount of money to, to push the project over, it's hard for me to wrap my head around that. And it has the essence, I learned this on March the thirteenth. So, one thing I wanted to talk about in your email Greg, on item number three, it says the, I'm sorry, on number two, says will the air scrubber that the county currently uses in the health department, T B room work in the new building? And there's a long explanation here, I think you might have gotten from Ouija or from you.
So the air scrubber.
I can read it, but I, I would rather you just kind of explain why that won't work and maybe let's discuss that a little bit. Our health director, Shelley Bilbeck is here.
And that's something we can look at, is it during design, all three rooms were intended to be, they shouldn't be. And if that's not the case, then we can back, you know, we can back some of that out. From what I understand, it's only the, that middle T B room, correct?
Currently, just to back up, the, the three rooms that are on this, are the T B tuberculosis exam room, uh, tuberculosis nurse's office and the biohazard room.
Which from what I understand, the biohazard room is just a room where the, it's got sharps containers that, that the needles go in, well, we could move those to the, to that other room, the T B exam room.
And if you made that, yeah, just a general, um, general storage, we would probably still provide some exhaust, um, but not to the same extent as what that A, those A I, you know, rooms require. The air scrubbers are typically, and I don't know how you're using them, but typically brought in like hospitals where a room was not a T B room and now it is.
This is what concerns me about this, is because it says in this email that the way you have it set up, that room will remain positive pressure.
Negative.
Okay, well, it said positive and then you.
Is it on that, is it on that aisle?
And that's where I was confused, so this will have.
Okay, no, it will be negative.
Okay, so it will be a negative.
The other, the other room, the nurse's station, if that's just an office, that would be the positive pressure. No, no, the air, and the air scrubbers, and if I miscite that on, on.
No, that's fine, I know you're going up on that, that was one thing that stood out to me.
Oh, are you using them to recirculate air back to the system or you're exhausting it out?
We're, we're using it as a T, for the T B room.
But are you exhausting it to the exterior or?
It's not currently.
You just circulate.
Right now, just be circulating because of the problems we've had over there, it's just an added layer of protection that we're using.
So the hospital code does not allow you to recirculate from a T, an A I room, airborne infections. Oh. And it does give an exception, but it primarily applies to existing facilities, which is what you're doing, that were not A I rooms that become A I rooms. Like I said, the hospitals use them a lot where they, you know, all of a sudden they need a, an A I room and, you know, they've gotta take just the general patient room and maybe that. Typically, they'll take those and just exhaust them out and wipe it all.
And that's what I thought you could do with a scrubber. I guess I'm still confused, is there additional equipment gonna be needed to make this a negative pressure room that we're having to purchase? Because this is not just an air scrubber, it has the ability to make negative pressure. So I don't understand where.
Because it's an exhaust, it's basically an exhaust fan with a bunch of filters.
Okay.
So it's possible.
But that's a lot of additional cost.
It's possible we could substitute that for the fan that we have in the project, you're just moving money around.
It's not available.
And also, some of these scrubbers, and I don't know which one you used, but they have a very high rate of exhaust.
I've already taken the main factor and the serial number that we have is rated for the size of room that's on the plan.
But what, I mean, the stuff that I got had probably five different.
Well, I had the, the major manual that had all of their, then there was a specific pressure in there with the serial number, this specific model that we have.
So you'll see the smallest one goes from, I think, its variable speed, three hundred CFM to nine hundred. If you crank that thing up to nine hundred CFM, you are just sucking all the air out of that room. It's a lot, so that drives up that outside air, that outside air unit. If you're only exhausting three hundred, that's a lot different than nine hundred. So if you're gonna do something that has variable speed capacity to go up to, and I'm just using nine hundred, because that was one of these, you have to be prepared to accommodate that nine hundred CFM.
So we don't have the ability to go between negative and positive pressure in this room, it will maintain the negative pressure?
Correct.
Okay, because our clinics that have.
Well, we have a fan that can turn the fan off.
Yeah, this equipment has the ability to turn it off, so you're not constantly running a negative pressure room. Because we have very few instances that we need to run it as a negative pressure room.
You can turn the fan off and it, it will no longer be negative. It's just on its own A C system, so that you're not, I mean, you're not recirculating any of that air to the, into the spaces. That again is something, if we're only going to one A I room, that we can look at the size of that unit. Maybe take the nurse's office and put her on somebody, you know, on one of the other split systems and downsize that system.
That's what, that's what I was trying to get to there.
So we have, we have a little bit of play that we can downsize because of that, the change to that area.
If we were to do that, would that be any significant savings? It gets rid of one whole air unit if I, if I'm understanding that right, is that correct?
That's what we're talking about, was to put those two rooms, the, the nurse's, and, and the biohazard on the adjacent area unit, keeping the, uh, T B room as a
Independent.
Independent exhaust only room and taking those other two rooms off of the, that exhaust.
And that would get rid of one of those A C systems, right?
You still need something to supply that room, but it'll be smaller. And the outside air will also, um, haven't finished, eleven to come today, but haven't finished the calculations. But it looks like we'll be able to decrease the amount of outside air that maybe we can get rid of. I don't wanna say we're gonna get rid of a, a whole unit, but I think it's coming close to that. That one of those outside air units, we can, we can, we'll be able to decrease it for sure, which will save some money.
And we're still, I mean, this kind of went along with Cody and everything, anything that the subs came up, more than willing to work with them on saving money, I mean, that's, you know, we're taxpayers too, we wanna make sure we exponentially use your money, but we want it to be the long run and don't wanna do something penny wide as here, you know, pound fool this kind of function, so. I guess they're still talking with the electrical people and stuff, but, you know, all of these things can still be addressed, but it's a function of where, we're not gonna be able to take all the fresh air unit out and, and go to the small. And to remind the commissioners, we did meet two or three weeks ago, me and Ouija, Andre were there, and we met with the apparent little bidder, the H V A C, and we talked about a whole list of, like, one of the questions that came up when we did the duct board, like we talked about earlier last week, to save some money. But duct board is not nearly as efficient.
It also has indoor quality problems, you can't clean it, you, you know.
And we're hand in hand with H V A C, some H V A C equipment has direct bearing on all the electrical costs.
Are we ready to start discussing these options that we received from Daniels regarding some costs that maybe we could look to cut in order to bring the project down to a closer to our budget?
If we cut one of those outside air, how many units are gonna be cut?
Did you hear that question?
No.
If one of those complete units were to be cut out, do we have any kind of estimate on how much savings we're looking at there?
That would have to come from the contractor, because he knows what his, his units.
But if, if, if one goes away, will the others have to get larger or? I mean, we're gonna have to replace tonnage or?
Um, it kind of depends on where we fall. I think.
There's two, right?
Yes.
One on each end of the building.
Oh, oh, you're talking about.
Cut one without that.
Outside pressure, yes.
The pressure.
I, I know that, I was told by the.
I don't know what your cost is.
I don't either, but he did tell me that the outside air system, I don't know if that's included in duct, it was between sixty and seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, I would need to know if that includes duct work or, or what. I don't think a duct would increase. If we were able to eliminate the smaller of the two, um, you would have to cross, you know, from one platform to the other with the truck line to get to that other side. Right now, we have one on each platform. Um, but that duct work that would span, that extra duct work spanning the two platforms, you would save on the duct work from the outside air unit to the exterior wall. I think that would probably be close to a wash.
Fees at sixty to seventy thousand?
That's his, that's his cost.
That's for the whole fresh air system.
That's for both, both units.
That's for both units.
And I don't know the way to say that included duct work.
Is it sixty apiece or?
That's what I was told.
No.
So you, so would, there'll cost savings of maybe thirty?
I would think less than that, because you got some duct.
You still have.
Yeah, this cost.
More of the two.
If this cost includes duct work, yeah, it would be less than that, because you're not really changing much on the duct, you still, you still has to go where it's.
Well, what's hard for me to understand is that these outside units that we're talking about drove the those two disciplines, the H V A C and the electrical, up to around two hundred ninety-seven thousand more than budget. So making that reduction, taking one of those units out only saves us around thirty thousand, doesn't add up to me.
And I, and I'm with the judge on this and, and I've kind of been sitting back listening and, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't understand. I, you know, we've all been around building and, and doing things and, um, for instance, I built a house and when I went in, I subcontracted and did all, did all my work and stuff and I actually came in under what I budgeted. I realize that there's, there's, it's, there's variances, but I, I'm having a hard time like he is and grasping the overage. It's, it just seems like it's, it's way, way higher than what, what, what it should have been. I, I, I don't know if we missed something somewhere, but when we went into this, we went in with a certain amount in mind and that's what we were, were telling our constituents. Uh, in the same token, our constituents were telling us that they want a nice building, they want, they want it to be here there for years and we understand that it costs, that costs more money, that's why the amount for the size of the building at the time, what we were looking at, uh, made sense to me. But like he said, we're talking, I'm looking at this on, on what we can cut, but this, this is not even half of what, what we're over and I, I, it's just not adding up to me, just like the air conditioning system. We can't, and, and I don't wanna do things to this building that in five years, we're gonna have to turn around and fix. That, that just, that's crazy. Uh, if, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it right to begin with and have it. But the overages just do, and I can't make, make them make sense and I've looked at everything two or three times. But like I said, I, I've just kind of sat back and let the other commissioners talk and actually, I, I got with Commissioner Cooper and we, we kind of talked about some of the questions that he actually had, uh, got, got in this email. Um, I'm, I'm just having a problem and, and, you know, I've talked to, like, like Commissioner Cooper, I talked to some of the people that I'm around in Lumberton that are in construction and stuff and, 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 and some of them, you know, they're looking at understanding what I'm talking about, but I still just don't, you know, when we say we're gonna spend X amount of dollars or we've got X amount of dollars to build this building, this is what we're looking at and we put the plans out there and then it's coming in this much money over, it's just, it's just hard for me to figure. I just, I'm having a hard time with that. And, and I may be wrong, is this the same, are we? And, and I may be wrong, is this the same, are we all in kind of agreement on this? But, but like, like I said.
I had gotten to an understanding of why it was gonna cost so much, but whenever you look at reducing the size or, or, or taking one of those whole units out and the savings is only thirty thousand, that's what didn't really make sense.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I'm coming from too.
And I know that's not a hard number you can give us today, but roughly thirty thousand is way less than I thought you were, what you're gonna say.
Well, that's, that's for the outside air, then, uh, you know, one of the things too is with, in budget, uh. Versus, you know, when we bid, all the equipment now is dual stage, which I believe is more efficient whenever you're just tempering the air and not having to. To really cool air off, our, our contractor, the help is budget, he, he didn't allow for that. And I, I'm, I'm assuming that's an increasing cost as well, dual stage equipment, um. And with having dual stage equipment, the SEER ratings, you can only get down to a certain level for dual stage equipment, is that right?
Certainly, the lowest is sixteen.
Like sixteen SEER, so you're, it's very efficient equipment, um.
So with single stage equipment, um, let's say a room like this, that either has no one in it, or five people in it, or fifty people in it. That two-stage equipment can operate at a lower speed in low load conditions. So it helps to keep your building dehumidified during low load periods. So you're gonna have to size your air conditioning for, you know, full occupancy, but you may not need that, you know, most of the time.
Close to ten.
The two-speed equipment runs at that low speed when it's, you know, when it doesn't need the full capacity, and it helps to control humidity within the building. And you've got several spaces that, you know, either have a lot of people or, you know, are gonna sit empty. Conference rooms, there's very similar, um, when you try to put a conference room on the same air handler as offices, same thing. Either the conference room is full of people or, or there's nobody in it, it's really hard to control the temperature.
For example, the EOC room, there may be days where there's nobody in there and there may be days with a crowd, a lot of people.
Yeah, the unit, a single speed unit will just cycle on and off, on and off, and it, it will maintain, it, it may maintain temperature, but it won't maintain humidity. Cause it runs for sh- said short periods of time.
So are we ready to start discussing these, uh, options to make cuts from the project in order to reduce the amount? Uh, as you can see, I made a spreadsheet here for us to use today and I, in the right-hand column, it says taken, and that, those are the items that I felt pretty sure that we could all agree on. And I'm gonna start with number one, omitting the rear, uh, parking area, uh, eighteen thousand one oh four, is everybody in agreement on that? And then if number one is taken, number two is an automatic, that, uh, we reduce the number of joint ceilings, that's four, a four thousand dollar savings.
Can you go, just one second Judge, back to number one?
Sure. Sure.
Uh, I have not ran this by any of the other commissioners, and I'm not sure if the judge has either, but when we started considering doing this, the, uh, dirt work is already done out there for that parking area. Uh, and once this building is complete, uh, my suggestion to the judge was the commissioners could get together and we could asphalt that. If, if no one has any opposition to that, I mean.
We, we've already done the lotses out there.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I think this would be a great cost savings to us.
We've already asphalted what's out there.
Cause we'll need a, uh, uh, at least something for the dumpster truck to get in and out of, so that wouldn't be a problem, we could all pitch in together at, at whatever time, so.
Yeah.
The, uh, item number three, does anyone else, uh, wanna see us, uh, go with, uh, says plastic laminate, is that kind of the same as Formica?
Yes.
Rather than the quartz countertops?
I buy that. I like the quartz.
Yeah, I do too, I know, it, it goes back to the building, a building that's gonna be there for a long time, and we go to putting Formica in things and it's just gonna end up being, uh, having to be changed out. Uh, I think we should build it right, uh, I'm, I would, I would like to stay with quartz, I'm with Chris on that.
We, we use both of course in plastic laminate, but I think they can't tell if that would be in plastic laminate, I'm a commissioner, I believe so.
This.
It is a durable product, Commissioner, it, it will last long, if it gets a whole lot of use and a lot of hot pots sit on it in certain areas, they might wear it out. But laminate is a durable product, not as durable as quartz, but we use it in a lot of different, a lot of different, uh, projects and it, it wears well. I'll just interject that from experience.
On, uh, item number four, there's nine exterior windows that, uh, Greg had identified omitting, that's a savings of five thousand dollars, and I recommend going with that.
Would there be any outside light coming in?
Well, I think these are all, uh, offices and other areas that had two windows, so.
When we originally had on that fourth side, when we had these dormers, one of the rooms that's next to that dormer is like a file room or a storage room. And it made sense at that time aesthetically to have a window there because of that way the door, it just didn't look right without it. But now that those are gone, we don't necessarily need it in that file room or storage room, there's a couple of other.
And that was two of them, that's two of the five.
Yes, sir, and there's some other windows that, one of the rooms had more than one window, only a couple of, I just, I, one man, I think the, I believe one of them was the small office off the kitchen area. There's a small office there, eliminated that window.
So are we in agreement on reducing those?
I am.
Does anybody want to omit the building plaque?
No.
Is anyone in favor of omitting the louver blinds? That's, that would be all of the blinds on the windows, right?
Correct.
I, uh, took the, uh, option number seven, utilizing aluminum feeders in lieu of copper, an eight thousand dollar reduction.
What is that?
That would, uh, change those, uh, Wuzi can probably explain it better, all the feeders go into the, uh, from the left, the main box to.
They're the larger copper conductors, that would be over, like one odd above.
Right.
They, the only condition with that was the electrical contractor has to use the compression termination kits with the tool that identifies the compression. And in, in my opinion, that's a suitable way to deal with it, you don't, it's not the small, uh, receptacle aluminum wires that everybody's talking about burning your houses down. It's just the big feeders that go from the outside panels to the inside panels, and everything on the distribution inside will still be copper.
For the record, Wuzi thought that would be a lot larger, uh, dollar amount than eight thousand dollars.
I really did, yeah.
But, uh, Cody says he, he, uh, got the guy to sharpen his pencil and that's what he came up with.
Uh, I'll never do this again, cause that's not worth it on a real, on, on some of the jobs, you know, just.
Can I, can I say something about that?
Sure, sure.
I don't agree with it, I, I've just, I've been around electrical for all my life, it seems like, and, uh, having, having worked in the, in, in that field. I'm not in favor of putting aluminum in anything o- over copper. Copper's gonna be there, uh, I've seen aluminum felt many times, and even though it's big and I just, I do not agree with that. And for eight thousand dollar savings, if you, if you have one of those burn out, it's gonna cost us more than that to put it, fix it. And that, and.
I was looking for everything I could give.
Right, and I, I just don't agree with that, you're looking, you're looking at some serious money if, if one of those, uh, inside feeders burns. And it can, uh, aluminum is not the way to go, not at all, not in a commercial building, and that's my opinion.
I, I can agree with you, that's why I started.
You agree?
I'd rather have copper feeders and plastic, uh, laminate tops.
Yeah, I would too, I would rather have copper feeders and pla- and the plastic laminate tops.
How about the, the quartz, you gonna back off of that and?
Well, we can go with, I'd, I'd rather have the copper than the, than the quartz for sure, it's safety, it's a safety factor anyway.
We got two votes for plastic.
All right.
I have three if you judge.
I did, I just changed.
Okay, so you just.
Took the ninety-nine fifty deductional number three and we put the eight thousand back in on that.
That's a good horse straight out, and I appreciate that.
Uh, is anybody in favor of the, any of the other options there from, uh, which would be the omit the lightning protection? I know Alvin's already told me how he felt on that, and I agree with him, but I wouldn't do that.
I wouldn't do that.
Nope.
I think it is our recommendation, well, not to eliminate that, but.
On number nine, the arc flash study, kind of, I know you explained that to the Commissioner Cooper and I, but kind of.
That was not intended to be included in this, in this project, uh.
So we can take that?
Yes, sir.
What about the site acceptance test, testing for forty-four eighty-five?
That was on the, uh, generator?
I don't know, that seems a little high just for the generator test.
Judge, are we taking number nine out?
Yes, sir.
Judge, what was that?
It was just, uh, the way he priced it, you know, that, he had, uh, his base price, the generator, then he had these, these items listed as volunteer offerings.
Okay, the site accepted test on the generator?
He did clarify what it was, or he just said site accepted.
Can we, can we put that pending? Uh, my recommendation is if you, if you get the generator, you want the startup and commissioning by the manufacturer's approved representative, so that it's one source responsibility.
I agree with that, but is that, is that really forty-four hundred dollars to do the startup investment?
I don't know.
That's what the, uh, at bedtime, they would qualify that.
But we can look at that, and if it's other stuff included in that that isn't required, we'd be happy to reduce that. But I would recommend to you to keep the util, the, the manufacturer.
Okay, we're gonna leave that in for now unless anybody wants to talk about taking it out. What about this, uh, four-hour gear on, owner training, two thousand and eighty-one dollars? Was, what is that?
For what now?
It's, uh, he had a lot of them for additional owner training.
It's warranted, is it on the air conditioning?
It's on the electrical.
It's on the electrical.
Okay, I'm assuming the gear.
Gear.
I assume, I, I don't know what it is, it just says, uh, that's, I worded it the exact way he had listed, four hour gear owner training. I think.
I mean, you can operate a breaker, I'll teach you how to operate a breaker, thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, we're gonna take that one.
And that may be also, is that, yeah.
I mean, if this is swi- like switchgear swapping things over, uh, I'm sure Tom Hughes knows how to do that really well, and we won't, we don't need that.
Yes, and, and, see, in my mind, that would have been part of the generator training with the transfer switch and that integration. But if he says switchgear, I mean, we're talking about panel boards, you're not talking about industrial gear, so there's, there should be no issue with that.
That's, uh, Luigi, is that for, like, if somebody's gonna work, try to work it hot, is that what that is for?
That would be the arc flash.
Arc flash, okay.
Which is coming up, I believe.
We're passing, yeah.
We took that. The, uh, additional warranty for nine hundred and fifty dollars, I think we should keep that.
I agree.
The, uh, data cabling, uh, we talked about taking that out, and they may be something that we contract ourselves, but I think we need to leave in our budget, because we're gonna have to pay for it. Whether we pay for it directly or we pay for it through the, uh, contractor.
I agree, I agree.
Uh, omitting the asphalt patching, I took that, that's something I think we can do ourselves.
We can do that ourselves.
Also, the, uh, utilize drywall stu- studs in place of the, uh, mezzanine fence, I think that's a good idea, go ahead and take that cut. Six thousand and four dollars. Turf and grass, I took that cut, five thousand dollars, I think that's something we can have inmates do. Everybody agree? Omit pavement, pavement markings, bumpers and signage, it's a three thousand dollar deduct that has to do with the parking bumpers out there and some signs in the parking lot.
Right.
We'll still need for the accessible parking, I think we have two spaces up front, that will need to be done correctly, we'll need to have signs, because once this building is complete. We're required, on proprietor, owner required, having inspected by state for what people think of as the ADA, but here's the Texas accessibility standards.
And we left five hundred in there for that, right? Does everybody agree it's okay to take that three thousand out? Does, does anyone not agree?
On the bumpers, uh, Cody? I think the, uh, guy that you have over it out there, that's been out there, he had text me, wanted to know about removing the ones that we've already removed.
Okay.
It, with this bumper, would that be included, putting them back or new ones?
Well, I had just put them out for anything to do with cleaning up.
We had, we, we kept those bumpers once he took them out, we got them back there.
Right, there's.
If I'm not mistaken, this was restrapping the parking lot and painting those existing bumpers that we had.
All right, all right.
It sounds like a reasonable price.
To leave it?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'll go with whatever the court's level is, but it seems.
And it was just an allowance, Commissioner, also.
He didn't have that, yeah, that's just an allowances.
It was just an allowance we had, we know we have to spend some money there.
Right.
I think we can do it ourselves.
Yeah.
Um, she drained the, uh.
So you're gonna take the three out?
Yes, sir. She drained the property rather than the storm su- a storm, uh, drain piping, and we installed the cover, it's, that's a forty thousand dollar deduct, and I think that's something we should do.
And if I can interject.
Sure.
On board, I met, um, a couple of weeks ago, after it initially came up, uh, with a simple engineer, we visited the site and he produced the drawings that next day or the following day. Uh, and originally, I think the county did not own that property east of it.
Right.
They don't wanna drain, so now that we own that, it simplifies his problem, and he's already got laid out and submitted the contract.
Good deal. Uh, reducing the, uh, the construction manager has a one hundred thousand dollar contingency built into the project, and now that all the beds are in, he had recommended that we could reduce that to fifty. And I agree with that, does anybody have any discussion on that? Then we'll take that cut. The next item, number nineteen, has three different options, A, B, and C, and I chose to go with C. Our original elevation shows the building with the, uh, wainscote brick on the north and west elevations, and I just, rather than bricking the whole building or not bricking all the building, I think it would look good if we did that. And have that cast stone as the topper, and we would also have the stone around that front entrance, is, is that correct?
I, I don't have, I'm not looking at it, but that's right, the, the price, if you add those two, I can do the.
It's a forty-six thousand dollar deduct if we do that option.
Yes, sir.
Now, would we still have the brick ledge all the way around if we ever decide to brick it later?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
I was gonna ask.
Did you have a funny, what was option A and B?
A and B was omit the brick on the south and east elevations, and then item B was omit all the brick and only having stone at the entrance. Item C is wainscote brick on the north and west elevations with cast stone, uh, topper, and does, that does include the, uh, stone at the entrance, right?
I'm sorry.
That does include the stone around the entrance?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what was that, what was that cost range?
The cost savings is.
Forty-six.
Forty-six thousand.
That was a, uh, an old option.
Okay.
Do you need one? There you go. That's number nineteen, and I think we're all on a consensus to take item C there.
Yes.
On item twenty, we had discussed maybe taking the generator out and handling that ourselves, since we're going out for a grant. But I, I believe it's best just to go ahead and have it installed by the contractor while we're doing everything else. And we would get the transfer switch, the pad and everything, and that also allows us when we go out for our, um, grant. To, uh, take not just the generator itself, but everything else that we're doing that, uh, sets the generator up, the transfer switch, the pad and any wiring or anything like that. Uh, and regardless, we got the budget for it, whether we do it in the project or do it separately, like, just like with the cabling.
So we're gonna have two generators?
No, sir, we'll still have just one.
Okay, well then, we're getting rid of enough item B then, right?
No, what, what item B was, was, uh, downsizing the generator.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Either omitting it altogether or downsizing it, and I, my recommendation is just leave it like it is.
Okay.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
I'm in favor of that.
Mr. Roberts? Item number twenty-one, this has to do with the, uh, flooring, there's three different options there. Uh, item A is to go, uh, from, uh, LVT, which is what was in the bids, to a Carndine night plank ceramic floor, and that would give us a ninety-five hundred and forty-two dollar reduction.
What is LVT?
Luxury vinyl tile, in this case it was a luxury vinyl plank, that would look, and Car- Carndine is a manufacturer of LVT, that's what they do. Uh, I think in talking, was it Terry Haring?
Uh, this was, uh, Brandon Porter.
Oh, Porter's, this might be, I don't, I hadn't looked at their, their alternate package, it might be a thinner, um, thinner material.
Is that what item C, are you talking about number C there, where it says alternate flooring package?
I have not seen their alternate flooring package yet.
No, that, also, that was to go the likes of, uh, carpet.
There was a, and then C is an alternate.
Well, that was the VCT, item C was VCT.
I think, is that what C is, is VCT?
Yes, sir.
And I think you recommended that we didn't do that.
Vinyl composition tile, I think I addressed it last week, is a, a product that we've used a lot, uh, it's a durable product. It's inexpensive to install, but expensive to maintain.
Right, that's what.
Waxing is a maintenance issue that you will have for the lifetime of the building. The Carndine and LVT is just a damn lot, if you're done, definitely waxing.
All right, and then on item B, it's, uh, an option to, uh, do sealed concrete and Louis flooring in some areas. To me, we should be looking at either item A or item B on this, on this, uh, do you remember which areas, I think there were five different areas that you referenced.
Some of the storage rooms, and I did look at the EOC room and doing that sealed concrete completely as well. And that's, that's gonna be an important room in the. And that's, that's gonna be an important room in this building, so you might, but I was looking, I was looking at every little item we could. I think we're okay in some of the smaller storage rooms to go with the, the sealed concrete. We already have sealed concrete in some of these areas. Uh, but some of the storage rooms, I, that we had, the LVT or the carpet tile, and I've taken that out and just gone with concrete. But that EOC, that's the real question. Right now, we have the, the tile in there, and I don't know if we want to. That could be a significant, that's gonna be an important room in this building. I think there's some public, when the public's in this building, I think they're all be, going in that area quite.
Like option A.
Yeah, I think that's better because we save more money anyway, and I think it would look better. Do you, what do you think?
I agree.
Does everybody agree that item A under twenty-one would be the best option? Last but not least is the, uh, split system for fresh air. We have item A where we can use a resinor split system at a six thousand dollar savings. Or item B is a Deacon package unit, and that was not recommended by Mr., uh, Williford, is that right?
Yes, sir. The, the package unit, you're gonna have ducts on the outside going to that wall.
Right. Yeah, we didn't, I didn't wanna say that either. So we, if we go to this resinor, that's a different manufacturer than what was in the original specs, is that what that is?
Correct, and that would have to be reviewed to make sure it applies.
Uh, I'd like to see us do that. Plus, y'all are fixing to look at maybe doing, making some other changes that would save some more money, right?
Yes, sir.
A?
Six thousand, what'd you say?
Is that what you recommended, A?
A, yes, sir, I'm sorry. So based on the options that we all just selected, we're still over budget by about a hundred and fifty thousand. That'd be a hundred and thirty-three thousand on construction, and then we still owe, uh, some money to the architect, which is twenty-seven, five sixty-two.
Hundred and what, thirty?
Hundred and, uh, one fifty. It's actually one fifty, seven eighty-four, forty-four. That's how much we're still over budget. And of that, one thirty-three, six fifty-six is construction. And the rest is the amount we owe to the architect.
Okay, if I'm looking at that correctly, which, this has been looking on the bright side. We got fifty thousand in contingency, which would come back to us if we did not have any change orders or anything like that.
Cody said there's not gonna be any change orders.
We've got right at a hundred thousand in generator. If we get a grant, that's gonna be that much coming back.
We'll get seventy-five percent of whatever that total is, so we're gonna get rid of those. And, uh, they're gonna save us a hundred thousand on that outside air unit when they redesign that.
Uh, is that probably meeting, it's like an hour.
No, but I will state that is just my opinion.
With the, uh, with that in mind, Judge, did you have any recommendation on where we would get this money?
From our, uh, current budget, out of the, uh, line item in the, uh, Commissioner's Court budget, oh one oh four oh one eight hundred, the contingency line item.
On, uh, Roden Bridge General?
No, sir, that's our, it's in the general budget, not Roden Bridge.
Alright, general?
Yes, sir, oh one oh four oh one eight hundred. That is the general, uh, contingency line item in our general fund.
And you're recommending a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, sir.
I maybe we do that.
Can we?
I have a motion by Commissioner Feld and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, is that right? And then some discussion from Commissioner Cooper?
Yes, sir. Do we have, uh, a current amount in that line item now, miss, uh?
Yes, sir, it's four ninety-seven.
Four ninety-seven.
We've spent three thousand out of that line item, and that was on a budget amendment about two, about a month ago or so. That's one ninety-seven.
Okay, now we'll amend the project budget, we need to come back through regular court and.
I think we can do that today. I think we can do that today with your motion.
Yes.
We'll, uh, move a hundred and fifty thousand from oh one oh four oh one eight hundred to this project. I don't have that line item in front of me. Do you know it offhand?
No, it's in, um, fund seventy. It's a construction fund. It's in a different fund, but I don't have that line item.
I'll pull it up.
How many months we got left?
Six.
Of our.
So we're halfway in this budget?
But Angela, you feel that we can't amend the budget presented to the public at a special meeting rather than a regular meeting?
It, he put on this as an agenda item to amend the project budget if necessary.
But if you'd rather wait, we can, we can do it Monday. We can amend it today, make it an informational item Monday.
I think we're putting on this informational item Monday, so that the public understands, you know, we didn't have a special meeting to do something that, uh, they're not aware of.
I agree. That's gonna be line item oh seven oh, five one oh, five three one. Does that sound right?
A what?
Oh seven oh.
Go ahead.
Five one oh, five three one. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Move to adjourn.
Sorry.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Feld. We're adjourned. Cody, y'all get started in the morning.
Angela. Chris, have you received any agenda for the meeting coming up at two o'clock? No. Is it gonna be in the, uh?
Red room?
Yes, sir.
What is?